Okay, if you will notice, I look at the bottom line, a total receipt comparison, and we're $59,000 less than what we were last month, I mean, last year this time. But whenever we look at year-to-date, we're 700,000 ahead of where we were last year. So, I think that we still have some claims on Title I and IDEA that will be coming to us, so I think that that'll probably turn out to be a wash this month if we'd had those claims come in.
The 145, Professional Development, who took part in all of that? Is it the edit? Is that it?
That's the group. And what they're going to do, that gives us seven days. This August 10th, they'll come here and work with the principals, or, you know, work with the principals somewhere, and then they'll have a day at each site, then the last day that they're here, they'll work with special ed, and then they'll come back together with the principals and talk about where we are and where we want to go. This week, some of us are in training for the teacher leader evaluation, and in Woodward, then we have others going at the end of the month to training in Enid, and Tracy may be going to Piedmont, or she might be going to go to Woodward with us. I am in the McRae training today and tomorrow. I will tell you that it's the most intensive training that I've attended in several years. I mean, it's labor-intensive, and then they are going to give us a test in the morning. If we do not pass this test, we get to do this 15 hours over again. They gave us homework assignments to do for this evening, and I have 60-page book to take the test over this, so that'll be in the morning. I don't think I'll do that this evening. I was going to share it with you and like, read the book to you, but I thought that might take too long. So, but it's very labor-intensive. Now, for the principals, and that's this, this one, this part I'm dealing with these two days deals with the principals evaluation. The rigor behind it is amazing. In each of the areas, you start off with developing. If you don't have all the check marks made in developing, then you don't get to move forward until you develop, design a plan, set your goals, to move to the next level. There's some discussion in Oklahoma that they want everyone to, all the principals, to be proficient in all areas. The lady said, that was doing the presentation today, that if we accomplish that, that we will be, she just wants to stand back and watch what Oklahoma does with test scores, if every, if we're proficient in all areas. But there are 21 areas, there are 66 practices that align with those 21 areas. The principals select three or four SMART goals to work toward, and then I go out and sit down. They provide me with the artifacts to demonstrate that they have mastered those things, so it's very labor-intensive for the principal to document that they have moved. So, it's very different than what we've used before. And they said that we'll have more trainings throughout the year. They wouldn't call this a training today, they called it an orientation. So, I'm tested over the orientation, and I'm kind of get test-phobic, so it's like, but it's, and then we'll spend three days with the teacher evaluation in the training event, so, intensive. So, that's what's going on with administration. We're learning a few things, and that's all I have for this evening.
Okay. Item 6, Items Occur in Business. 6A, Discussion with Possible Board Action Reassignment of the Falling Personnel. Number one, Tracy Schuber. Number two, Brandy Pease. Number three, Tiffany Smith. Number four, Becky Miranda. Number five, Jennifer Tyree. Number six, Brian Smithy, for the 2012-2013 school year.
I explained in the letter that each of these would be moving, but I'll be happy to answer questions. Do we have questions?
Where's, where's Tracy going?
Tracy's going to be the halftime counselor, halftime Title I teacher from, she'll be halftime counselor, serving Lincoln and Longfellow. Then she'll take Ms. Hader's position in the Title I reading that we had at Long, at Lincoln, she'll take that half-day position.
And what's Jennifer gonna do?
Tracy?
Jennifer is going to go to kindergarten from pre-K.
Okay.
We had three sections last year of pre-K, and right now, we only have the numbers for two.
Okay.
Has the counselor's position ever been full-time at Lincoln and Longfellow?
Actually, what we had last year was we shared Allison between, among the three elementary schools, and had her do PE at Washington. Well, Tracy needed another section of PE, and when she needed that other section of PE, then we could just, two sections of PE, then we could just leave Allison there to do counseling and PE there, and it opened up the opportunity for us to have this counselor, so we're adding a little bit of counseling, but just a little.
Washington has their own, right? Am I understanding right?
Well, it was only part-time, because she teaches PE till after lunch.
She's halftime that.
Basically, half and half.
Got it, okay.
So, there's no travel. She's just in my building doing PE and counseling.
Right.
And when she was, last year, we didn't get very much counseling at all at Lincoln, and I just feel like with the new, it's not just because the legislation says we need to do something with bullying and be proactive, it's just the fact those kids need more counseling than what we've been providing, and this is a way we can do it without stretching the budget too far.
Well, let's just go ahead and add, what is Brandy Pease gonna do?
Brandy is going from pre-K to kinder. There's gonna be five sections of kindergarten, because we have that humongous class that came through pre-K, so I'm going to have five sections of kindergarten, and only three right now, first grade. So, depending on numbers, and we'll write on the bubble in first grade, that's the way it's gonna be. So, Brandy's gonna be kindergarten, Tiffany Smith will be kindergarten, Jennifer Tyree will be kindergarten, and then the two that were already there will remain in kindergarten. So, those are the five kindergartens. And then Becky Miranda, who has her heart, she has taught pre-K one year, kinder one year, first grade one year. When it was time for someone new to come on, I asked her what she would like to do, and she really liked pre-K. So, we'll have Boar and she together in pre-K, then the five kinders, and then three sections of first grade.
Okay, and Tiffany Smith?
Yeah, Tiffany just wanted to do kindergarten, because she's done first grade all this time. So, we'll have Teresa Rader and Georgiana Gagnon, and then our new hire, Tenai, will be our third, our three in first grade.
And then Brian Smithy, what's he gonna do?
He's going from the middle school to the high school, and I tried to explain that, I don't know if I did, maybe I, I tried to do that in this letter, explain where these people were going to be moving, because I knew that that was a lot of reassignments, and so I'm glad you're asking, but we're having difficult time finding math teachers who are math certified. He had put in a request to move to the high school, and so, we're going to allow him to do that, and we're still going to need two math positions, so, and we're working diligently to get those math positions filled.
Well, and Larry, you might remember that Debbie Justice retired, so really, we're just filling her position and reassigning people to cover all of our areas.
There are so many people that I just don't know anymore, and if I don't ask.
I want you to ask, that's what this is about, so that's fine.
Make a motion to approve the reassignment of the personnel listed in item 6A.
Second.
Berg.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Martin.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
Six B, Discuss and vote whether to convene in the executive session to discuss the employment of the falling personnel for a one-year temporary contract for the 2012-2013 school year. Number one, Shannon Drew, certified teacher. Number two, Charlie Roach, certified teacher. Number three, Casey Adair, certified teacher. Number four, Deborah Fink, certified teacher. Number five, Scott Ball, certified teacher and coach. And number six, Shelley Lovelace, certified teacher.
Love's age.
Are there some more?
Yes.
Number seven, Michael Lockwood, Fair Professional. Number eight, Elizabeth Lowman, interventionist. And number nine, Donna Ferri, intervention, interventionist.
I make a motion, we go into...
Executive session.
Executive session.
Second.
Okay. Item 6C, I declare that the executive session is over. 6D, vote to acknowledge return to open session.
I still move.
Take it.
McDermott.
Aye.
Martin.
Yes.
Berg.
Aye.
Ellis.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Yeah, Board of Education met in executive session, commencing at 3:31 PM. Those present in executive session were Ellis, McDermott, Martin, Berg, Parker, Johnson, and at different, at specified times, Shannon Drew, Charlie Roach, Casey Adair, Deborah Fink, Scott Ball. The items discussed in executive session were the employment of any or all personnel as listed below. This executive session is permitted by 25 OS Section 307B1. No other items were discussed.
6F, Vote to Employ or Not Employ the Falling Personnel for a One-Year Temporary Contract for 2012-2013 School Year. Number one, Shannon Drew. Number two, Charlie Roach. Number three, Casey Adair. Number four, Deborah Fink. Number five, Scott Ball. Number six, Shelley Lovelace. Number seven, Michael Lockwood. Number eight, Elizabeth Lowman. And number nine, Donna Ferri.
Make a motion, we employ these.
Second.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Martin.
Yes.
Berg.
Aye.
Ellis.
Aye.
And we're so excited. I think we did the best job. So, you don't have to stay with us, I know you want to, but it's okay, just go ahead.
Can I lead too?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. We're so glad you're on board with us.
Go get a house.
Do you want to go to, which one is there?
J.
Do you want to move forward to 6J and review the, is that right, or not?
Is that okay, though?
I think it is.
Okay.
6J, Review of Bids Received from District-Wide Contracts, Lease Agreements, and Copiers.
Okay, SPCs will look, I think you could just review that. The Menolka Biz Hub 552, 1,400,000 copies a year, including toner parts, supplies, labor, overage charge will be .0057, 36-month lease, for 3,094.82 per month. Copiers Plus, Sharp MX 503, service for 1,400,000 copies per year, including toner parts, supplies, labor, overage charge will be .0050 for 36-month lease, $2,145 per month. Enid Typewriter, a Saban 5002 SP, service for 1,400,000 copies per year, including toner parts, supplies, labor, overage charge will be .0078, 36-month lease, for 2,392.34 a month, or proposal to finance with Community Bank, and it would be 2,281.33 with 1,371.33 billed by Community Bank, and 910 billed by Enid Typewriter. Proposal Three, same proposal as number one or two, but billed monthly for copies run without any minimums. Then Dirks Copy Products, Linear MP 5002 SP, Digital Copiers, service for 1,400,000 copies per year, including toner parts, supplies, labor, overage charge will be .0048 for 36-month lease, 1,000, 1,781.12 per month.
Copiers, are we looking at?
It was eight, nine? Did you say nine?
I thought she said nine.
Oh, is it nine?
Uh-huh.
Okay. So, it's, we have five sites, and Lincoln would have two, so that makes six, so that's seven, and here, we'd do two, is nine. And the thing here is, right now, we have to run back and forth to use that other one, so we use this one up here, well, it's not, it's not cost-effective to use that little machine, so. I've had Tony review this, and, because I, I know that he works a lot with us on when we have problems with our copiers and technology, and he felt like that. Dirks, and I feel like Dirks has a bid that we should entertain.
Now, three years ago, I believe, Kenneth and the guys there at the table helped me out, but we, we didn't think about network capabilities and all that, am I correct? Now do these, I mean...
This is supposed to be network.
Okay.
Because that was one of the big things I want. I think that that is cost-effective for the teacher also, so.
Sure is.
Cost-effective for the school and effective for the teacher, let me say that correctly.
How come we have to go three-year bid on this? Isn't that right? 36 months?
That's what we're doing now.
Well, that's what we, I mean, just following what we've done.
Okay. First time.
Thank you.
The 1,400,000, is that kind of what?
That aligns with the specs that we gave.
Okay.
Kenneth Terry said today that we have not gone over that, so we have not had to pay overage charges. So, she tries to, but she was that out to do that.
That's what I wanted to figure out.
Yeah.
And we pay at the end of the year.
Okay. Now, you pay this a monthly?
Yes, and then, so we don't have a monthly copy count.
Oh, you have an annual copy count, okay. You pay this monthly, but you pay the...
If there were to be an overage charge, it would be every month.
Okay, so we've reviewed those bids, that's J.
Right. So, we're going to K, is what you're trying to tell me. 6K, Discussion with Possible Board Action Concerning District-Wide Contracts, Lease Agreements on Copiers for 2012-2013 School Year. Contracts, lease agreements which are continuing into FY 2013 pending appropriation approval, and until the renewal date of the contract lease agreement, at which time the boards will have the option to renew or not renew the contract lease agreement.
Explain that, what that means.
Well, I think we're needing to decide which one we're going with.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Which one we select.
I make a motion to accept the bid from Dirks Copy Products for the copier, nine copiers, for $1,781.12 per month.
When will they be delivered, if they get...
If we can move on this, then I can tell you.
I make a motion. Aye. Second.
Kenneth, or Berg.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Martin.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
So, when will we get those?
Whenever you get them ready, we can have a talk with them.
Tomorrow.
I think he was ready yesterday, so he's in Parkhurst to ask that question, so.
6G, Discussion with Possible Board Action Concerning Support Staff Salary Schedule for the 2012-2013 School Year.
We did not do anything slash here. When you look at the salaries of our support, it's time to review those, I think. And so, in looking at, I put in your letter that we would increase the cooks by 50 cents per hour, increase clerical and technical by 25 cents per hour, the teacher assistants by 45 cents per hour, the bus drivers, $4.60 per hour, and custodians, 25 cents per hour. Do you have your letter that I sent you? That kind of delineates it all into what the increase would be like.
Anybody got any issues or questions about the support personnel salary schedule?
So, these, of course, it's obvious what the cooks are, the clerical, technical people, are these the people in our offices?
Well, Tony and Mason are clerical, technical, and then the others are in the offices. And we did on the secretarial business office worker on the backside, if you'll notice on that, that we did add a BA degree business, we did add the word business on that. So, that's... Do we have any other questions on that? And we add the interventionist, $15 per hour, that had been being paid by, through early intervention, and we just put it on our salary schedule.
Do we have a motion on 6G?
Make a motion to approve the increases recommended of increasing the cooks by 50 cents an hour, clerical and technical by 25 cents, teachers assistants by 25 cents an hour, increase bus drivers by $4.60 an hour, and increase custodians by 25 cents an hour. What is that? 2012-2013 School Year.
Second. Ellis.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Martin.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
6H, Discussion with Possible Board Action Concerning Extra Duty Salary Schedule for 2012-2013 School Year.
Okay, on your sheet that you have, if you'll notice, I have highlighted, and it was supposed to be in yellow, but since I did it in black and white, it's gray, what the proposed new salary would be, and I tell you what it was before. So, like, high school boys baseball, 27.15, it was 2,500. Assistant, 13.75, and it was 1,250. Softball, 27.15, and it was 2,500. And the assistant, 13.75, and it was 1,250. High school head, boys basketball coach, we're recommending 5,500, it was 5,000. And for the high school head football coach, 5,500, and it was 5,000. Head, high school assistant coach, 1,800, and it was 1,650. On the next page, the band director, 4,675, and it was 4,250. We did a strike-through on officiating, because that's not what we do any longer, so we just did a strike-through on those. On the building sponsor, what we discussed on that was, there's a lot of difference between what an elementary building sponsor does, that's someone that's in charge of the building, if the principal's out, and what the high school does. So, what we did was use the same factor that we do with administration. So, the elementary, the base is 505, we just multiplied the elementary by 1.25, the middle school, 1.3, and the high school, 1.35. And so, that gives us a variation in the amount that we pay the building sponsor.
And debate and drama.
Then debate, drama, speech is 4,675, and it was 4,000. Homebound teacher, from now 20, and it was 15. And then vocal music teacher, 4,675, and it was 4,250. And so, those are the changes that we're recommending.
I make a motion, we approve the extra duty salary schedule for 2012-2013 School Year. Second.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Martin.
Yes.
Berg.
Aye.
Ellis.
Aye.
6I, Discuss and Vote to Approve or Not Approve the Service Contracts for FY 2013. Number, number one, American Fidelity, Section 125, Flexible Benefits Plan.
We don't have anything to match, that's just continuing. Joanne said, but they require us to say, yes, we're gonna stay with it every year, unless we're gonna change to something, something else.
Okay. Another question. Do you have to select one company to do that with, or can, can teachers have different, I mean, if they want something besides American Fidelity, can they do?
Well, now, there are some things that they can do on their own that possibly are payroll deducted, but as a whole, the district chooses one to go, to go through.
And how do, how do they get?
Well, I don't know how it's done here, so, because I don't handle that. That's, that's Joanne handles all of that, so.
So, that would be like, their 401Ks, I mean, not 401...
Yeah.
403Bs.
We can deduct it and have like, Edward D. Jones. Right, you can have... Or Ellen Reed.
The vendors, you don't have, don't have to just use American Fidelity as the vendor. For us to do our Plan 125, we have to select which companies we're going to run that for.
It's really the 125.
Can we do a vote? I mean, or should we do them individually?
It's your call, Mr. President.
And the agreement with the commissioner?
Yeah, I was gonna do number two right now. With County Board of Commissioners Agreement for Services, this is an agreement to provide proportional contribution for legal appraisal services. It's signed by the county commissioners, and I guess we've went and had this agreement annually for the last 12 years.
If we don't pay, they don't have to.
Make a motion to approve the service contractors for FY 2013 listed in I, one and two. Second.
Berg.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Martin.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
6L, Discussion and Action on the Renewal of the Lease of an Ice Cream Machine for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2013, as required under the provisions of the Equipment Lease Agreement dated December 7, 2010, between Alba Public Schools and POS Credit Corporation.
It's just the same thing that we've done in the past, we just have to do it annually, and we can't break the lease.
The lease isn't...
It's till 14. I just looked it up the other day.
So, it's got another year? Do you know which machine this is?
It's the high school.
High School Student Council. It's the one that girls' basketball started, and they've given it to the student council about great.
Okay.
I still move. We'll approve this lease.
Second.
McDermott.
Aye.
Martin.
Yes.
Berg.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
6M, Discussion with Possible Board Action, Resolution to the Oklahoma State Department of Education of Alba Public Schools Intent to Use Hours Instead of Days for the 2012-2013 School Year.
This is something that we have to do at the very beginning of the school year, is to let the State Department of Education know that we plan on using hours instead of days, and the reason that we recommend that we do this is because if we have inclement weather, it's like this year, we didn't have to make that day up. We have developed our calendar with 175 days, 173 days of instruction, two days, parent-teacher conferences, and then five additional days for professional development. And so, we intend to go that. If we would have inclement weather, though, and we had to take out a day... If we would have inclement weather, though, and we had to take out a day, we could calculate our calendar and how I'd have to make the days up, so that's why that we do this.
Make a motion, we, um, use hours instead of days, two thousand twelve, thirteen school year.
Second.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Martin.
Yes.
Byrd.
Aye.
Ellis.
Aye. Six N, discussion with possible board action, contract with Center for Educational Alliance for the Cooperative Education Project, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen.
This is the same agreement that the Co-op has used in the past, and they would just like to continue that same agreement.
So move on in.
Second.
Martin.
Yeah.
Byrd.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Ellis.
Aye. Six O, discussion with possible board action on a contract for cleaning services of our buildings with Circle H LLC.
Um, on the contract that you have there in front of you, um, it says, this is what it would be monthly, Alba High School of two thousand, Alba Middle, Middle School fifteen hundred, Lincoln Elementary fifteen hundred, Longspell Elementary fifteen hundred. And that's ten calendar months that we pay that. With, the district does save money by using this service, we, we're not out there, um, benefits and things of that nature. And so the district actually does save funds doing this. The one thing that we will do this year is we're going to delineate whose job description is what, this is what the cleaning crew does, and this is what the daytime custodian does. So we are going to delineate that. But the services have been, have been good, but that's the one thing that we think that can make them even better.
How many years have we used this service?
Uh, this is, we did a half a year, the year, so it's one point five years, right?
I believe that's correct.
From the research I've done, I believe it's one point five.
And who is it signed by here?
That's Clarence Harson.
Okay.
The biggest thing that we've had in the past is trying to get custodians coming to work and that type of thing. The other thing that has been very valuable to us is that we can have one custodian per building, and they come in at night when the kids aren't there, and that's where they get the cleaning completely. Because otherwise, you clean and you may be the first room to get cleaned for the day, and by the end of the day, it's dirty and you come back to a dirty classroom. So everybody comes to a clean classroom in the morning. So it's really worked out well for us.
Good.
Did I understand the forest sites are being serviced?
Yes, the only one that's not is Washington.
Okay.
We still have two custodians at Washington.
Make a motion on six O.
Make that a motion. So we have a contract cleaning service.
Second.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Martin.
Yes.
Byrd.
Aye.
Ellis.
Aye. Item seven, discussion with possible board action, working with the City of Alba contractor concerning green space at the administration building.
Okay, there's been discussion on green spaces and, um, we, we would like to, if other people are going to have a green space, we want to have a green space also. We think that it's eye appealing in the communities that have it, and we need a board approval for us to do that. I'll need help watering. Anybody saw the plant that was in my office, I should not recommend green spaces. So, but anyway, we need board approval for us to move forward with.
Who's putting green space at your building?
Uh, not the, my one right in front of us, because it would be bricked and it's our, they will not mess with that one, but we will put one in the one next to us. Yes.
What, what will that mean?
Whatever Jane does, I'm going to do, because she had a really good idea, come like, oh, I said, what are you going to put on? So seriously, you were talking about that you were going to have like crepe myrtle, didn't you say?
Yeah, there's, it's, there's a plan, I mean, if the Oklahoma State Department of Forestry has come in and given us a plan.
So, so I don't have to worry about that, somebody else is going to worry about that for me?
You'll have to take care of it, as long, whoever owns the building.
The watering.
Have to take care of it.
Okay, my understanding on that is that when they're doing the construction and everything, you have to tell them what you want. Now, at that point in time, we also can tell them if we want a water hydrant out here too, and that will be the owner's responsibility now, or is that going to be the City of Alba?
Everything falls back on the owners.
Okay.
They are, though, going to let you petition for what size of space or whatever you might want.
Right.
It's still rather up in the air, whether, all of us have a meter in front of our buildings. And we possibly can get something to go down into that hole and get water to wash.
I actually think we have a hydrant right out here.
Um, a lot of us do have hydrants in the front, they've been disconnected for various reasons through the years, for freezing problems and, and people would just come along, turn them on for fun and things like that. So I know ours has been disconnected in front of the building, so.
But I know Liz has been told the same thing you've been told.
Right.
Working out of prison, you can put a special deal on there to keep.
I think freezing was the main thing. But it, it's going to, you know, it'll, it'll be, it's still a work in progress, but.
But we did need to get board action where we could continue on with this.
Do we have to have that, that space?
There is water.
Well, I just think that it adds eye appeal to the community, and so it's not that we have to, I just thought that, that eye appeal, hopefully I, hopefully I will take care of it and it will add eye appeal. Uh, but, and eye appeal to it, as when I drive into some other communities and you see the green space, you go, oh, that one's really nice. So that's why we don't have to, that's why the board's going to make the decision this evening.
Why wouldn't we if they want it?
She wants it.
She wants it.
She wants it?
She does, she has for it.
I move that we, um, go forward with a green space at the administration building.
Second.
Martin.
Yes.
Byrd.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Ellis.
Aye. There was no need. And, uh.
Brown doesn't have to do the watering.
Uh, second one and third one, we just.